Welcome to the June meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. I'm Michael Goldman, appreciate everyone coming out on this beautiful evening. We're going to start with the minutes of our last meeting from May 8th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Great. All in favor? Okay, we're in business. So first up this evening is Unique Cafe. And is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? If so, if you could please go to the mic over there and if you could please identify yourself. Thank you. I'm assuming there's a mic. Is there a mic there, Peter? Yeah. Let's wait one second while Peter checks it out. Okay, no problem. Thank you, Peter. It's all good. So now you should be able to speak into the microphone. Here we go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Leonard Brandis from Brandis Architecture and Design, Scarsdale, New York. I'm here representing Unique Cafe, who's looking to get a change of use from a retail store to a carryout establishment. The store itself is at 69 Pondfield Road. The building is a big building, 69 to 70. It's a condominium. And the owner of the property, Barbara Nichols, is here as well. She owns two parts of this condominium. There are, I believe, 14 units total. Twenty-one units total. There was 14 people I had to mail out to. Several own a couple of units. The space itself is per code. We're more than 100 feet away from any other property in terms of a carryout restaurant. Recently, Taco Project was just changed to a restaurant from a carryout restaurant. So now we don't have to go any -- there's no issues with that property anymore. There are other coffee shops in the area, but we can -- I would also like to address some of the changes. I don't think you want me to read the document.
No, use your judgment.
Anyway, this used to be a travel agency before, and it is a very small space. As you can see, it's less than 1,000 square feet. And we are trying to create a space that will also add 12 seats on the inside with four tables, bar service that people would just take outs. It's mostly takeout service. There is no actual kitchen itself. It's basically storage. We're not preparing foods there. The only thing that's being prepared is the coffee. Everything else is being brought in. We are adding accessible bathroom to the space, which it doesn't have right now. Right now, it has a very small bathroom, as you can see on the demolition plan that's being displayed right now. And showing that we're going to have this open for the customers' use to be able to come in and be able to use the facilities and have accessibility, baby changing stations, everything else that's required. We did -- I did see the letter that we received from John Hulzinger, and I'd like to address that, if that's okay, some points that he had brought up.
Yeah, one quick question before you dive in is, who will be the operator of the restaurant?
Adrian right here is going to be the operator. He's here, and he certainly can answer questions as well.
Terrific.
That's why he's here. Want to make sure everybody's around. So, questions that came in. Now, I know the first one in terms of creating litter and debris on sidewalks, well, this is not really a very messy type of thing. Most people are coming there, they're getting coffee and getting a Danish or a sandwich, a small sandwich, and then walking and going home or eating in the space. So we really don't expect a lot of litter to be produced by this situation, or for people hanging around, you know, and smoking cigarettes. And we certainly aren't going to have smoking inside the space. That's certainly illegal in New York State anyway. So we do not expect that to be a big issue. I don't see it really being a big issue with the other facilities that do have coffee shops. Across the street, there is one, The Grind. We don't really see any problems over there, but we also have somebody who's going to be managing this space and making sure that it's clean out front. We certainly don't want to have a dirty space because that's not going to be attractive to bringing business in. So I think maintenance will be certainly taken care of in many ways. There's a question about having enough storage space. We got -- we spoke with Dan, who's the property manager of the space there, and he does not see that as a problem. This was written by one of the board members, so we did go back and went to check everybody. He does not see it as a big problem at all, as long as we can bag the -- any wet products that we have, which will be like coffee grinds, basically. Once again, we're not -- we don't have a kitchen. So we don't expect that much garbage or trash. There may be, you know, basically from paper plates, things like that, there will be some trash. But we don't expect anything major in terms of wet trash. So he said that we can easily handle that and take that care of that, and will be taken up by the private carding company, which has five days a week service right now. Another question that was brought up by this is discussing about that the building closes. It's only open till 6 o'clock Monday through Friday, and only open till 1 o'clock on Saturday and closed on Sunday. That is true for the doors going to the offices upstairs and in the basement area? It is not true for the retail stores. Water is continuously running through those and cannot be turned off by law because they need to have, like, code bathrooms and usable water. The floor certainly has water going to it all the time. When we spoke to the managing -- property manager again, what they are planning on doing, it does not exist, is adding what they -- is known also as a water cop or a system that actually protects the building. So if a water main breaks or a water pipe breaks and there's a lot of damage, it'll automatically turn off the main, the water main, to the building. That is what they plan on doing. So the whole talk about how the water doesn't exist, how it's closed off and there's not going to have water, is not a reality. The water is there all the time, 24 hours a day. We're not going to be open 24 hours a day. We're looking to be open at the latest till 10 o'clock on weekends. So we're not looking for, you know, late time and bringing crowds in. So basically, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM are the hours that we're looking to be in. I am certainly open to questions.
It would be helpful if we could just hear from the operator, just to get his perspective on the operation background, et cetera?
My name is Adrian Camberry. And yeah, it was -- I own a landscaping company as well. I'll work around here always, like in Bronxville, this is the area I'm interested in, my projects. And one of my dreams was to open a coffee shop. And we work really hard with Barbara and Lenny and other people, just to make everything, to make sure everything is right and by the hope, by the law. And I believe so, we made those goals so far, and trying to bring something different and something cleanest. I believe this is going to be the cleanest coffee shop, the cleanest space, that's our goal, and the better coffee here. That's two things, and yeah, that's.
That's helpful. So questions from the board, either for the architect or for the operator, or for that matter, the unit owner? We can, you know, they're all here. Sorry, go ahead. Please.
Talking about the other coffee shops that are in the town. There is one other coffee shop across the street with The Grind. And then there were three coffee shops that are on Offercraft and Park, which is over a block away from us. And those are actually very close to each other. You have Buskeroo, or Buskadoo, and you have Starbucks, and you have the Toulejour, which is a Korean coffee shop. And those are right next to each other at the other part of town. They're all by the tracks over there, not where we are right now. So I don't feel like this is a major infraction in terms of being a lot of coffee shops in one area. I know that was also the cause.
Yeah, and before we get to public comments, just wanted to give the board a chance to ask questions.
It sounds like a lot of the food items will be delivered to the store. Can you help me understand what that delivery schedule looks like, the frequency, the timing of those?
Would be in the morning, like 8:00 AM. They're not going to be a lot of food. They'll have a small sandwich. Most of my focus is to have coffees, of different coffees. That's not going to be like sandwiches and some cookies. It's not going to be like major food. We're not bringing like cooking or anything else.
So once a day in the morning?
Yeah, once a day in the morning.
Thank you.
You said you have a landscaping business. Do you have any other experience running a shop like this before?
Yes, in my country.
And last question, for the hours, is it 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day? Or is it different for weekdays and weekends, you're thinking?
I mean, it's about 8:00, I believe 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM, but on Saturdays, should be like 8:00 PM, 8 to 8:00, and Sundays, we're not sure, probably it's going to be shorter.
But the earliest it would open is 8:00 AM?
8:00 AM.
Okay, if there are no more questions from the planning board, I propose to -- I'm sorry, was there something you wanted to say? Are you good? You're welcome to. Okay. Well, I think we're going to open up the public meeting and we'll, you know, be getting comments from various folks. But if there's something you wanted to say as owner before we start, you're welcome to do that. Absolutely. Feel free. Yeah, please.
Welcome, everyone. Good evening. And I just wanted to introduce myself and explain my history in the Village. I am Barbara Nichols, and I've been a business owner here for over 20 years. I've owned Gramington Travel and Bayside Travel. And I have also been a landlord. As Len mentioned, I own two units in the Gramington condo building, 69 Pondfield and 75 Pondfield. And I've also been an active member. I've been on the board of the Bronxville Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a current member. So very interested in the success of the Village. It's very, very near and dear to my heart. So my business, Bayside Travel, was located in this space for forever, for a very, very long time, until the pandemic hit. And it was then apparent, although not immediately, that we could not sustain having a physical location any longer. So although I maintained the space from March of 2020, when the pandemic hit, until November of 2020, in the hopes that there was going to be a quicker solution, resolution to the crisis in the country, it did not happen. And I finally had to put this space up for rent, which was never my intention, but I did. So I put it up for rent in November of 2020, and it took until April of 2022 to get a signed lease. And it was with a retail tenant, a very promising retail tenant. The name is Vidaith and Life and Home. And they opened in June of 2022. And within a year, less than a year, April of the following year, they had to close their doors. Not for lack of effort and interest in making this a viable business, but I think they really fell victim to what's gone on with so many retail spaces, so many retail operations, including in the Village, due to online shopping, et cetera. So as we know, the businesses that thrive in our community are food service businesses. They're really doing very well, and it brings a lot of people into the Village. So, and that is actually all of the serious interests, since I put the store back up for rent in September of 2023, has been with food service-related businesses. So that's what brings us to today. And I feel very confident in Adrian and his ability to run a viable business and to really be an asset to our lovely Bronxville business community. So I respectfully submit those words this evening, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd propose that we open up the public meeting and give folks in the public who have thoughts on this application a chance to step up to the mic and say a few words, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Neil Goldberg. I'm the dermatologist at 77 Pondfield Road. I've been in the building for almost 34 years. So the building and I are about the same age. It's a little older, but we've been together about half our lives. And one thing I've learned is it's hard to teach an old building new tricks. I'm reminded about that. Every day when I come to work, there's a flood of dirty water, foul-smelling, disgusting water, coming from a restaurant on the corner when they hose out their dumpsters in the morning. It's a great restaurant. I love the restaurant. But old buildings, if you want to keep the charm, sometimes you have to put up with some inconvenience. One of the things about 77 Pondfield is we don't have a dumpster. We have no place to put our trash outdoors, which isn't a problem for a medical building because all medical waste doesn't smell, doesn't attract mice, doesn't attract rats, doesn't attract vermin, roaches, or anything. So you can keep it in the closet in the building, and nobody cares and nobody notices. And I'm not sure that having a restaurant is the best idea for that kind of building because even the neatest garbage from a restaurant is going to be messy, a little stinky, there are going to be accidents, and Angel can't hose the closet in the middle of our building when there's an accident. My kids told me they were neat every time they ate too, but my kitchen was always a mess. So best intentions are important, and I'm sure these guys are sincere, but that may not be an ideal location for a food establishment. I worry about the bathrooms. Even though they have their own bathroom, there's going to be some spillover. Our bathrooms can hardly handle the traffic we have. It's a Herculean effort every day to keep them clean, neat, and working. I worry about security because there is an entrance or a back door. You know, our building locks at 6:00. Having a possible entry into the common areas of the building is not -- does not make me feel safe. There's lots of expensive equipment in all the doctor's offices in the entire building. And, you know, 77 Pondfield is a landmark. It's a near medical building in this town. It's also one of the most recognizable medical buildings in the county. It would be nice to keep it a classy medical building. It would be nice to keep it clean and neat. It would be nice to keep litter, loitering, dirt away, if we can. Listen, I drink Diet Coke. I don't drink expensive coffee. I understand why people want to sell expensive coffee. I just don't understand why people drink it so much. But we have a ton of coffee places in Bronxville. Slave to the Grind, which is a classic in Bronxville, is right across the street. And I won't even list all the other coffee places because there's too many to list. I'm not sure we need another coffee place. And finally, because I'm a dermatologist, I see a lot of patients with small, discreet problems, easy to treat. So I see more patients than any other doctor in the Village and have for over 30 years. That's tens of thousands of patients, and they all say, because they come from the city, they come from Jersey, they come from Long Island, they come from Connecticut, they say, wow, I never knew Bronxville existed. I never knew this place was so cute. I never knew this place was so gorgeous. It's a wonderful place to work. It's been a wonderful place to work for my whole career here, but it didn't end up like that by accident. It's curated. It's hard work of people like you guys that keep the town looking like Bronxville, not like White Plains. I mean, I live in White Plains, and within three blocks of my apartment are 15 cell phone stores. It's the craziest thing in the world. I'm hoping that we can keep the character of the Village the way it's always been. And I'm hoping that we can keep a medical building, a medical building. And I know it's hard to get tenants, and it's hard to run a business, and it's not always easy to make decisions like this. But our old building isn't built for a food establishment. No matter how limited the food that's served is, there's always going to be a mess, there's always going to be stinky stuff, there's always going to be problems, and we have no place to put it. And if they keep it all in their establishment, that's still in the building. The mice, the rats, and all the other guys that love leftover food aren't going to take long to go from the first floor to the second floor. And listen, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the effort over the years.
Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else from the public who'd like to speak to the application?
Hey, how are you? My name's Jordan Marshall. I'm here on behalf of Slaves to the Grind. I came here with a letter that I was -- our statement from my mother, Carol Marshall, who's the owner, that I'd like to read to you guys really quickly. It reads, "My name is Carol Marshall, and I'm the owner of Slaves to the Grind Coffee Bar. I would like to state my position as owner of Slaves to the Grind, as well as my employees' position, known on the prospect of allowing yet another coffee bar to open up in Bronxville. I respectfully want to say that I think it is a true disloyalty and mistake to allow yet another coffee bar into Bronxville, basically a two-block business district. It is unfair to the already pre-existing coffee bar businesses, especially the original ones like ourselves, that have added to the town's tax base and become a major draw to the town, both to the people buying homes here, as well as customers that come from surrounding areas to spend their money. It is always especially important to support small local businesses, just like our annual campaigns in town during the holiday season. The reality is that a small mom-and-pop business that is a staple of Bronxville is increasingly challenging to run a business and make a living under the current economic climate with constantly increasing costs on all levels. But to then basically dilute the waters and split the coffee bar pie into yet another piece, making it a smaller piece, it becomes that much more difficult to sustain a profitable business. The smaller the piece, the less we all get, the less we make, the harder it is to support a livelihood. Give back, loyalty, and support of the pre-existing coffee bars should be paramount to this town. Also, one must ask why, once again, consideration is being given to allow a food and beverage establishment to take place in a space that was previously not zoned for such." I'd also like to add, on my own take, we do have a lot of coffee bars in town, and I think, you know, fair to say, you know, we -- thankfully, we're all able to get through COVID. I mean, even, you know, as competition as it is, Starbucks exists, and I know there's even Park Place, or Lang sells coffee. Obder sells coffee. We sell coffee. We have a coffee -- we have a coffee bar that's right by the train station. We have Toulejour. I mean, it's kind of -- I mean, Bronxville Diner has coffee. There's a lot of places that sell coffee, so to have one more, even coffee emporiums strictly would be, again, yes, cutting that down to a smaller fraction, making it that much more difficult for all of us. You know, having come through COVID, and like I said, you know, we all were able to survive that point. I mean, that was a very difficult point, and so we really had to dig our heels in and make that possible for ourselves. And I think that, you know, that says something, but it also, I think, is a reason why maybe there should be consideration as to like why there can't be anything else. I mean, we have, it's, I feel like this has expanded to the point where anything more, and this is crazy, I mean, you know, to echo his point earlier, when you go down the street and see 15 phone stores, I mean, do you really need a 16th phone store to make phone sales? I do think that it's really on everybody's behalf, that, you know, again, if we sell coffee, and all these other places sell coffee, if there's one more place, or giving one more reason for people to potentially not come into our doors, to not buy coffee from us. And my point for bringing up the COVID thing is, you know, we've seen difficult times. So to make it any more difficult unnecessarily, I think, would be short-sighted. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public who'd like to speak about the application?
Hi, I'm Scott from Obder Coffee. When I told people--
I'm sorry, from?
It used to be Buskadoo, Obder.
Oh, got it. Okay, yeah.
76, so when I told people I was coming here tonight to talk about another coffee shop, they thought I was kidding, and I was like, no, I'm not kidding, and I am here. In currently, in the Central Business District of Bronxville, if you are interested in obtaining an espresso-based drink, you can go to Starbucks, you can come to us, you can go to Slave to the Grind, you can go to Tops Bakery, you can go to Chantilly, you can go to the Bronxville Coffee House, and you can go to Touche Bejour. That's all within the Central Business District of Bronxville. Tonight, there's this application for Unique Coffee, and on top of that, there's also Noble Pie, which will also have an espresso machine, which would bring that number to nine. And I don't need to reiterate everything that was just said. I could just say that I can't imagine any other use. If there were nine pharmacies, or nine barber shops, or nine of anything, people would think that's ridiculous. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments they'd like to make on the application? Mary Ann, please.
Once again, gentlemen, this will be very brief. Mary Ann Pope, 11 Garden Avenue. I received the notice for the coffee shop. I was here, as you probably recall, the last meeting about Taco Project, and one of my concerns was the garbage and the maintenance of the garbage and the cleaning of the garbage cans. And it was my understanding that that is being looked into. I think Paul said he was looking into it, the cleaning, so that you didn't have the odor. I know it's a problem. It's a problem anyplace. It's a problem in residents if the garbage truck goes by and there's liquid that comes out. I mean, it's a common thing. As the owner of residents on Garden Avenue, I have no objection. I mean, everything is concealed. Normally, I'm out here objecting, as you all know. Modus operandi. And I don't see, I don't see any problem with it in terms of from my residents. I'm not seeing the garbage. I don't, I think the letter that was written about the cigarette butts and the pedestrian, you know, rope, you know, that would hang around outside, I don't see, think that's the case. But on the other hand, as one who owns retail space, owns a commercial building, I can side with the landlord because I have space that's been rented, that's been empty for four years since the pandemic. And I think that, yes, there are a number of coffee shops in Bronxville, but clearly they all seem to be flourishing now. I mean, people, you can barely get in, and I think the competition is great, you know. Yes, if I were a coffee shop, I'd say, oh, no, we don't need one more. But I do think that, you know, the cream comes to the top, the best will survive. But on the other hand, for, is it, what did you say your first name was? Barbara, as a landlord, I think it's difficult. And when you have someone who is willing to invest the time and the money to draft plans to do this, someone who has, I guess, experience from what he says, I mean, I don't know these people. I don't know these people, uh, who has experience from previous, previous occupation, um, why not? I mean, this, this, the village will collect tax revenue if the space is rented. The landlords, I mean, you know, it's nice to say, oh, yeah, it's, it's, get, get the space rented, but when nobody calls, it's very difficult. Or, you know, there's several things that I know from my own space that I've had tenants that didn't work out over the years. So I'm not making that same mistake. And I have, um, probably owned a building since nineteen seventy-six. So I've had quite a few tenants over the years. And I think that, um, someone who is willing to invest the time and the money to, to go into a space, why not? Competition is good. And certainly, we wouldn't, we wouldn't say we can't open another restaurant because all the restaurants are thriving in the village. I mean, it is great to come to the village, people love seeing the outdoor space, and I, I, I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to give the applicant a chance just to speak to some of the points that have been raised in particular about the, the garbage issue that's, uh, come up a few times.
So, uh, let's start with the garbage. So, as I said, I own a landscaping company. I'm sorry, all, all day long. I can pick up that bag of garbage like ten times a day, just garbage. Garbage is not an issue. We spoke with the landlord, we spoke with the project, uh, project manager, right? The building, yeah, yeah. Property manager, that's not an issue. And I saw they can very, very organize here, and they don't want a competition. I'm sorry, I'm not looking to put anyone out of business, I'm trying to make something I think is better. So, um, in my country, I owned the coffee shop for about ten years. And that time, I used to work as a journalist. I was editor-in-chief, one of the biggest TV in my country, and also had my show with TV. For those two months, I've been researching, asking people what they need. Ninety-five percent of people, they told me, we need better coffee, we need clean space. And I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm the one who want to offer this, and I think I have my experience, I have a potential, I have the money, want to invest. I don't see any issue about that. So, and I don't, I don't think the coffee's wasn't sold on. That's sold on.
I would also like to remind everybody that we do not have a kitchen that we're operating, that we're cooking or making foods, where there's going to be grease and rime and loose salads and vegetables all over the place. This is a sealed, you know, we're getting, everything being delivered in the morning once, once a day, so everything's fresh. But we are not looking to create a full kitchen, so we will not have the type of mess that you do have with a standard restaurant. I do understand that concern, and that's why we said we can bag it and keep it in the air if we need to.
What about the food you know, sir?
That will get, will be trashed.
It will be trashed, that's the point.
Well, it'll go, either go to a system where they do have, pick up the food from restaurants, and also where it goes out to people who need food. So anything that's not eaten that day will be, you know, transferred to go to the churches and places where it can be eaten, obviously. It's only the food that we're trashing is people leave a piece of Danish on the side and don't finish. So we're talking about small pieces, but it's also that we will seal and keep it clean. That is, that is the plan. We do want to have a clean space.
You let, um, it sounds like the owner might have something to add? Yeah, please.
Just one, one last comment, um, respectfully, Dr. Goldberg. It is not just a medical building. This is sixty-nine to seventy-seven Pond Field Road, and there are four storefronts which are open to, you know, this change of use if it is approved. So it is not just a historic medical building.
And one quick question, we, we got the letter that was from the condo board, and so just wanted to understand if the condo board wasn't in favor of this. I just don't know the mechanics of whether or not they had a vote on this.
Well, um, it, the letter actually did not come from the condo board, it came from John Holzinger, who owns the property management company.
Understood.
But, um, Dr. Goldberg is a member of the board, and the board was CC'd on it. I don't know whether it was put to a vote. It was never discussed with me, this concern, I, I can't really-
But you didn't need board approval-
No, you don't.
-to do this, that's what I wanted to understand.
So, nothing in the condo bylaws or any of the other rules or regulations of the condo give the board or any unit owners the authority to approve or disapprove a tenant? What the board is entitled, not the board, but the unit owners and the board are entitled to is a right of first refusal. They will have that right, so if anyone truly wants to enter the space and take over the lease, as is, they have that right, and that's the only right they can exercise, other than speaking, you know, just of their concerns. So, it's not, they're, they cannot approve a tenant or disapprove of a tenant.
Any other questions from the board before we go into our discussion?
Yeah, I, could someone describe to me what happens to the garbage? I did picture it, just going to a dumpster in, in, in back, but I guess that's not the case. What, what is the, the life cycle of garbage in the?
Question, and what has always been, of all that building downstairs in the basement, there is a separate room that's near the back door, and the garbage is all kept within that room with its own rollers, has rolling carts that stay in there, and every morning those carts are being brought out the back of the building by the parking lot, by the municipal lot.
What kind of carts are they?
I believe they're just basically like, uh, the bins.
They're large, plastic-
Just large, plastic bins.
... on wheels, and they have inside of them contractor bags, you know, plastic bags.
Okay.
They're sealed and put into this road.
Okay. And I guess the kind of waste that goes in there now, the flower shop probably puts stuff in there.
Flower shop gets plenty of waste, and, and that's also very wet. Uh, it's another story. Uh, but you do have paper, people who do eat food and have lunch and whatever leftover medical things that aren't, uh, going out to special places, so there's, there's other waste products going in there. But that is all, once again, kept in a room in the basement area, which is actually finished space in the basement, by the way. There are doctors' offices down there, one of my doctors is down there, so I, I know that for a fact. Uh, so, uh, that is kept there, and, and once again, this is going to be a clean space that we're going to be creating. We're looking for an upscale type of coffee shop. So it, it isn't the mom-and-pop coffee shop, it's more of an upscale, more of a, maybe a European style, I should say. So we're not looking for the same style as what's here, we're looking to have another style. And there are no coffee shops or, or other real food shops with, with small ships on that side of Pond Field Road. They are all on the other side, Langs and the Bakery and, and Slave to the Grind, they're all on the opposite side of the road. So that's also just another thing. I feel that it is fair to have that coffee shop on this side, where there is nothing in that area.
And the amount of waste that you expect, you gonna fill up one of those containers? Two, three? Any idea, based on your past experience?
One, two?
One?
One.
Okay.
Most of them are deep gogs, uh, most of them are deep gogs, and I'd be like, two bags of garbage a day, maximum.
And basically coffee grounds?
Most of people are not taking, go, the coffee, get a sandwich, do nothing, get a small cookie, and just leave, most of people, so it's no garbage. Garbage is not an issue, except, there are, you have too many solutions to solve about that. Like I said, I can pick up a garbage every day. I just finished another project in Bronxville, so yes, that takes, my workers all are on them, so if it's like, we have resolution with the garbage, even though they said they're gonna have, landlords will not take care of it.
All right, we're not expecting people to be sitting so much in there, we only have twelve seats, uh, inside the space. This is not really to be a sit-down restaurant, where there's going to be a lot of trash produced inside the space itself. Now, it's mostly, they're gonna be, usually, and my experience has been that we have mothers with baby couches that come in, they're gonna sit there, have coffee with their friends, and they're gonna be there for a while, so it's not creating a lot of trash and a lot of garbage there. It's not, it's not full serve, it's not even a serve, uh, coffee space. You take your sandwich or your coffee and sit down at the table, you're not being served, we're not having waitress service.
Okay, if there aren't any other more questions from the board, I propose that we close the public meeting unless there's anyone else from the public who wanted to speak on this. If not, I'd propose we go into our session and discuss the application. The one, uh, point I'd want to make, uh, just because we've been through this a few times on the board while I've been here, but I don't know about others. From time to time, the trustees pass, uh, certain regulations when they see too much of something happening in the village. So for instance, at least at one time, Christina, correct me, they had sort of put a moratorium on more bank buildings at a certain, at a certain time, but I just wanted to point out the trustees have not, you know, made that determination on other fronts. So for instance, they haven't said, we have too much coffee here. We can always make our own determination, but there has been no action by the village on that front. Um, so with that, why don't we, uh, see who'd like to speak up about the application? Eileen?
There was something brought up, and I don't know if I heard correctly, when this, if this receives a change in use, what about the other stores that are, doesn't affect them?
This is just for this particular footprint. Yeah, that's correct.
And you were saying this is the only coffee shop on this side of the street. There is a similar type of situation down the street with, where there's a food establishment or retail within, um, a condominium complex, would that be Bronxville Towers? At the bottom, there's the Continental and the Cheese Shop, is that similar, or is that a different type of setup? Does anybody know?
Is the Cheese Stop, uh, Shop, Paula, the takeout establishment, it's not really a coffee place, but?
No, I actually did their shop just now in Sparso, so I'm kind of doing, handling with their product. Uh, they occasionally have, they do have a sauce, some other products that go with the cheeses, but not in terms of food. It's not a food establishment.
Yeah.
But that would be considered- That would be considered retail, right?
I, I don't remember that. I think that's a retail.
Okay, that's a retail, okay.
I would assume some of that's right, technically.
Yeah, and I was just wondering, but that's within a condominium complex, right? Because Bronxville Towers, is that part of that, or is that separate?
I don't know if they call it a condominium.
But I, but I think you raised an interesting broader point, which is there are a lot of buildings around town that have a lot of uses in them-
Yes.
-with those uses including takeout food.
Right.
There are many, many buildings that have the issue that's being raised.
Right, so that's what I was just saying, where there-
Yeah.
Right, well, that's why I was kind of asking, because there is food, and there's apartments and other uses in there, so I just wanted to see how that has been playing out within the village. And also, over by the movie theater, there is buildings there where there's food, scero, and the coffee, and there's apartments and mixed-use buildings, correct?
Yeah. Other comments as we go around the horn? Mike, you want to add anything?
Um, I think a few comments. I empathize with the challenge landlords have in this environment. Um, this landlord has gone through three different, um, tenants effectively in the space that have not worked out. And I think part of that is the competition from online commerce. And so one of the things that, um, online commerce cannot, um, compete is in food and other experiences. And so I think there has been a general change in the retail, in the first-floor retail landscape of small towns towards these types of establishments that can survive. And so I recognize, um, the need for a change of use to correspond with the times. I think what is important to address, though, to the comments of many people, is how is garbage going to be disposed of? Because garbage from a carryout or restaurant is very different from an office environment. Um, I think they've done an admirable job that, to have a plan to minimize the amount of waste that is created because they're bringing in food, they do not have a kitchen. And, um, it sounds like there is a process that there is a dumpster in the basement that the food can be disposed of. And so I think enough has, to, it sounds like things to a certain extent have been addressed to, um, um, to solve kind of the change of use.
Jim, anything you'd want to add?
No.
Albert, Tom?
I would just add that, you know, like, there are a bunch of coffee shops, I have my favorite, um, but I'm not willing to make a limit on them at this point, unfortunately. So I would be in favor.
Tom, any thoughts?
I agree with a lot of the points that Mike was making, I think, uh, for the landlord. Uh, you know, it has been difficult to lease that space, and, uh, uh, you know, if the operator is willing to make the investment, despite the fact that it could be very competitive and could be very challenging, you know, that's on you. Um, uh, there's nothing from the co-op perspective or condominium perspective that limits, uh, the use, and I agree with Albert from the standpoint of, you know, we shouldn't be necessarily putting a limit on the number of coffee shops at this point in Bronxville.
Yes, I'll just echo much of what has been said. I think, you know, we all really appreciate the merchants who are here in town, and we want to see them thrive, but I think we're also big believers in competition. And, uh, you know, I think, uh, we hope that everyone will succeed, and, uh, you know, there've been folks who've come in and were not in favor of some of the folks who are here in the room when they came in. And, uh, so far, it's worked out well, so I think we're hoping that will continue to be the case, so that, does someone want to make a motion?
I move you approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, congratulations, best of luck.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the, uh, agenda is Noble, Noble Pies, and, uh, welcome, and if you can please introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, Chairperson Goldman and planning board members, thank you for your time here tonight. Uh, so I'm Jodi Gutierrez, I work with George Oliver &amp; Sons, and, uh, we are the managing agents for the landlord at one-twenty-eight Parkway Road in Bronxville. Not to be competitive or anything, but I spent my childhood, I'll date myself now, at Woolworths in Bronxville. My brother went to Bronxville High School, and I've been managing this property for about twenty-five years. Um, so you may or may not, I don't expect you to remember, but I was here in front of you last year with the application for the NYU Langone Fertility Clinic on the second floor, and, uh, thank you for your approval. I'm proud to say that it has opened, it is a beautiful facility, and I think really adds a wonderful, um, service to the residents of the village. And so with that, and Chase Bank, uh, and, and Chase Bank Private Client being the other co-tenants, we just had one small space left in the building. And, um, the owners agreed with me as the property manager that it was important that we had the right tenant for the space. We had a number of smoke shops that wanted to come in, we had, um, you know, food uses where they wanted to cook in the space, and we've got other tenants in the building. Um, we had many who were, um, companies where they'd not owned businesses before, and so we felt that it was worth waiting, not that I don't like seeing you, but I don't want to be here again next year, um, you know, with another, uh, proposal, that we have a business that's already established and that would really, I'm excited to say, bring, um, a wonderful product and service to the village. And so Noble Pies actually is already well-known in the village of Bronxville, they're at Farmer's Market, and, and very popular there. Uh, they started out up in the village of Warwick, uh, just as a small farm stand, making pies with all-natural ingredients, and, uh, people loved them so much that they opened a retail shop up there, and then expanded to Terry Town, to Beacon in Rye, and now want to open here in Bronxville. And I can't think of a better location than right next to the train station, uh, with the hospital across the street, with the, the other tenants in this building, the residences in the neighborhood, their pies are fantastic, and, um, you will, you will be very pleased to have them in the village. With regard to the space, there will not be any baking on-site. Uh, everything will be brought in in the morning, um, and, and then served throughout the day. Uh, there will be, um, there is a garbage dumpster behind the building, and so, um, that, that's a non-issue, uh, and so that is already there, has been there. Uh, Prelude upstairs, that's medical waste, so that gets, um, disposed of in a different way, as was mentioned by the previous architect. And, um, Chase Bank really has very little trash, so, uh, it's not that, it will be overloaded with garbage. Um, so actually, the first plan that, um, sorry, the one before- So actually, the first plan that, sorry, the one before that, thanks Christina, shows, so all the dark area is Chase Bank and Chase Private Client. And so Suite A is the space where Noble Pies would, would go. Okay, thank you. Next slide, thank you. So this is the layout of the space. Obviously, the retail area will be in the front. You actually enter through a vestibule in the building. The landlord will be constructing an ADA bathroom, so that will be handicap accessible. And then in the back, there will be all of the sinks and storage necessary for the space. And everything obviously will meet health code and so on. And then in the front is the sales area. So what we're requesting tonight is a change from an office use. Years ago, this was actually an architect's office to a retail use. And so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, or I can bring up the Noble Pie folks and they can tell you more about their business.
Yeah, we'd love to hear from them, but just one question about that counter at the front.
Yes.
Is there going to be an exterior window opening there, or you only access from the inside?
Uh, you access from the inside. That's, that's a picture window. It's there already. Um, the counter is just kind of so people can put things down as they're looking for their money and credit cards and, you know, all that, finding their train tickets and all of that. But yeah, so you can see from, thank you Christina, from the, from the picture photo of the building where the Noble Pie sign is. That's a proposed sign to be in keeping with the rest of the building. It will be the same, similar type of signage as the rest of the building. And we'll obviously go to design review for that approval. But the windows, the three windows below are, are the windows that are, we're looking into the space. And I just have to say one thing that's really, because Leslie and Tom probably won't mention it, but I'd never had cherry pie before because it's not something I thought I would like. And it's called Will You Marry Me Cherry? And the reason it's called that is because Leslie made the pie for Tom and he liked it so much that he asked her to marry him. And then I tried it and it's actually that good. And I understand that an employee, rumor has it that an employee in your, in this building is a big fan of Noble Pie. So, and while they do sell coffee, that's not, they're not, you know, a coffee shop. This is really the pies. And they're not only sweet pies, but they're a savory pie, so like chicken pot pie and, um, and, and cream pie and all different types of pies. So that's their, and they've been on QVC, sold, what was it, 70,000 pies on QVC? And they're actually wholesaling now to grocery stores regionally. And so one day you will know that Noble Pies is a really big name. And we can say we have them here almost first, so.
Terrific. I assume they brought slices of cherry pie for, for all of us?
Naturally.
And with that, you're welcome to come up to the mic.
I actually thought about that, but it might appear when we were trying to.
It, uh, the optics of it would not be great.
They actually brought one for me. It's in my car. I'm happy to share.
Enjoy. Please, come on up. Happy birthday.
And you know a great present would be in approval, right?
We'll see what we can do. Please come up to the mic.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Leslie Noble. And yes, Noble is my maiden name. So that's how we named Noble Pies. But the, I started the business 16 years ago. And like Jodi said, literally, I started selling pies out of my home. I live in a farm in Warwick. And it, I made a few pies, sold them on the side of the road at a picnic table, and people stopped, which I almost couldn't believe. And I thought, if I was driving by and saw somebody selling pies on the side of the road, would I be brave enough to stop? But they did. And it very quickly became a family business. Tom, here, Tom Herman is my husband and business partner. And his, and we're still married after 16 years of making pie. And fortunately, my middle son Zachary, um, he joined us right before COVID. He was working in Brooklyn and decided to come back to the country. And because of his youth, we're able to expand our operation. So, um, we, just quickly, we've been very busy. We've sold our pies on QVC. We have four very successful retail stores. And we found that the model works so well. And we love communities that are very community-oriented, where there's, there's a downtown and everybody really takes a lot of pride in keeping them, you know, with built with small family businesses. And Zachary had been working at the Bronxville Farmer's Market.
Two years.
About two years. And he fell in love with Bronxville. And, um, and we're really happy that he, that he did. And we have a really nice clientele here that likes our pies.
Hey, everyone. I'm Zachary, one of the owners of Noble Pies. That's my partner Angie over there who also helps run the business. Just like my mother said, we make pies and that's the primary thing that we do at Noble Pies. Our pies are made with ingredients from the Hudson Valley. And I'm sure a lot of you know, but if you go on Google and search for a pie shop, it doesn't really exist around here. So we've found and we know that people love pie. And just like my mother said, we love being part of the community. And out of all the farmers markets I worked, it was just, there's such a great feeling here in the town of Bronxville. And it's, it's hard to describe in this from here or, you know, come visit where you're selling pies. But people love our product. And one amazing thing is at the farmer's market is that there's at least a dozen doctors who will actually schedule their breaks to come grab their pies to bring home to their wives while they're working their shifts on a Saturday, which is kind of funny. But yes, we sell pies, I would say, and this is a, this is a fact, but 90% of our business are whole pies. So most of our business would be takeout business. There's very little heating that goes on. We do heat up slices of pie if you want to heat up a slice of pie and have it to go. As you can see, it's a really tiny space, so most of the business is just going to be, we expect it to be to go unless someone decides to stay for, you know, a few minutes before they get on the train. Across our four stores, I know coffee sales is clearly, like, it's been the theme since this meeting started. But I'm really proud to say that less than 5% of our sales are coffee sales at our stores. And I'm actually, I'm actually a customer of Whisker Do over there myself. And we're, we're super about supporting local, like, community businesses. And a lot of the towns that we go into will actually try to source other businesses, whatever it is that they're selling, because we think that it takes a whole community to promote each other. And that's kind of been one of the reasons by, by our success. So there's nothing to say that we're going to be carrying their coffee in our shop if they're interested in working together because, you know, that's, in my opinion, that's the right way to do things. There's, there's three main categories of our customer demographic when they're coming into Noble Pies. Number one is gifts. Tons of people buy pies as gifts. We're huge on gifting. Number two, my mother mentioned that we sell savory pies. We usually have five different savory pie flavors on our menu. And every week, we have a farmer's table special. So we live in farm country in Warwick, so every week you'll be able to try some special pie that coincides with the seasons, the growing seasons in New York. So we have a huge following behind our savory pies. They're perfect for dinner. We have two different sizes of pie, our nine-inch pie, it's a family size. It serves four people, four adults. We also have a six-inch size, which is supposed to be for two, but depending on the pie, it'll be for one person. Our second category is the meal to bring home, which I mentioned. And the third, which is, which is really popular and becoming more increasingly popular because it's definitely a trend, but people love bringing pies and baked goods to, to gatherings. And now that COVID is over, that's been a really large part of our business is those people bring pies to gatherings. And we'd love to, to be that option for people here in Bronxville. Last but not least, I think the location is absolutely perfect. I think there's a maternity ward above us. So all those lovely pregnant ladies might be interested in some pie. And there's also a hospital right across the street. And a lot of people do grab our savory pies for anyone who needs. You know, our savory pies are really like, the experience is like a home-cooked meal. And that's how we make it. We slow-cook all the fillings in the pies. I don't have too much else to say. We really hope that we can bring our pies to Bronxville.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public meeting. Was there a question, Mike?
I have a question on the delivery times. You said it's in the morning. That corner is quite busy because it abuts the train station. Can you help me understand how you plan on taking deliveries out? And how all those pies get loaded into the retail store?
Sure. So we have a, basically a really small refrigerated van. It's not like a, like a box truck. It's like, almost like a minivan size. And we actually, we don't deliver in the mornings anymore. We actually deliver in the evening. And we also, we deliver our pies right before our store closes so that our, our staff can, can help our delivery people, so there's no confusion or, it's just there's more cohesion and consistency in doing that. It's, it's less congested in the evening here, like after seven o'clock, correct?
Yes.
And are you brewing coffee or selling pre-prepared coffee?
Like, like brew or fresh coffee?
Yeah, well, you have.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, so let's open up the public meeting, see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak about this application. All right, well, seeing none, I think we'll close the public meeting and open it up for discussion. Anyone who'd like to, maybe we'll start from left to right this time. Tom, anything?
I think you have a great product. My wife times all of her visits to the farmer's market when you're there, which I think is every other week or something like that. And it will save me from traveling at Thanksgiving to, I forget where I went, but I had to go some distance to get your pies. So I think you'd be a, a great addition to Bronxville. I think you already have the following. I think it should be a success. So I, I would be very much in favor.
Albert?
I, I haven't, I go to the farmer's market every week and now I have to put you on my list. Sounds great. I'm, I'm in favor.
Jim?
So are you going to keep going to the farmer's market or you limit yourself to the storefront?
To get your customers to come actually into the town, because a lot of people will want from that.
Ah, okay. And are you going to take requests, like if somebody comes in and says, I want an X kind of pie, will that show up the next day?
Yeah, we do that already. Just need three days' notice.
Three days' notice, okay.
Anyone else over on this side?
I think the change of use from office to retail, again, makes sense here that we know there's challenges with office. And I think what villages don't want are empty establishments. That invites crime. It invites other issues. And so the more we can fill, make sure spaces are filled. And with bustling businesses, I encourage that. So I think the change of use makes sense here. And I think they have the right infrastructure in place for garbage disposal, which will be minimal because, again, they are not cooking or producing anything. Everything's being delivered, so.
I agree with everything that you've all said, and I think it would be a good addition to the town.
Okay, I have nothing to add. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve the application.
Second. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Okay, our next application is from the diner. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the diner? And this is regarding the outdoor dining, yeah, on the street.
Good evening. I'm Laura Delaba. I'm representing the Bronxville Diner. This is Yota. She's the owner. We submitted our application for one space, but we are here to advocate for the space that we currently have, which is 36 feet. We have two parking spaces right now, well, one and a half. We had during, after COVID, we had to shorten one of the parking spaces due to a Con Edison manhole that's right in front of the diner. It's right next to the crosswalk. Since we don't have a parking space right in front of the diner that we can use a full parking space because of that manhole, we would have to use the one right next to it. And to us, it just makes no sense to just shorten it by half of a parking space. So we were just trying to maintain the length that we currently have. To us, it's not financially wise to just have one parking space. We are going to adapt to every single structure change that's necessary. But we just wanted to ask to keep the length that we currently have. Under Hills has three parking spaces. That's 26 feet, I believe. We're using 36 feet. La Casa has four parking spaces right now. I spoke to Jim. The theory that Jim, the, the, not, the reason that Jim wants to give is that he wants everybody to go by half, to go down half a space. So I think it should be fair for everybody. I think it should be equal. So if everybody is allotted the same space, I think it would be fair. So since La Casa has four, they would go down to two. So it would be fair for us to have the right to have two as well. We're only using one and a half. And that's what I'm trying to ask, to keep the one and a half space that we currently have.
Was there anything else you wanted to go over in terms of your slides?
That's the diagram of the diner right now, so what we currently have. That is what we currently have right now. It's one and a half space. We have half of the diner, and then right next to the diner, there is an office building. And then we take about 10 inches of the Bronxville Natural Store, the herbal store. Nobody has complained about us taking their storefront. Those are the modifications that we're going to do, the metal roofing, the, the bollards. And we're going to take out the cement barriers.
Yeah, so a couple of quick points. I'm sure there'll be questions from the board, too. I'm getting a little. Peter, if there's anything you can do there, I'll put it farther away. But, um, you know, I, I think it's important to point out that it's not just Jim, the village administrator who's come out with this, you know, perspective, but the trustees, you know, when they kicked this project over to us, were pretty clear with us that overall they wanted to see, you know, the overall, you know, sheds that had been put up during COVID as somewhat of an emergency measure reduced by roughly one-half. And that was a judgment that they made based on the overall mix they want in the town. And we, I think, have the liberty to tinker with that at the margins, but the basic mandate they gave us was pretty clear. And by way of example, Baccio has moved from, you know, two spaces to one. And I think by the time we're, we're done with this, everyone will have taken a reduction. And it can seem somewhat arbitrary, I know, to go from, you know, what is maybe one and a half spaces to one space or what have you. But I can't. But I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the board, but I think we do want to, you know, be respectful of the guidance that the trustees gave us in terms of how to work with that. And so with that, toss it out for other questions or comments.
Did, was there any notification of your, the space will no longer be in front of your diner at all, right, under your proposal? And were the tenants or owners of the buildings that you're going to sit in front of notified of the proposal that you've made?
Well, so right now, it already occupies that parking space. The herbal store, they came in after the outside structure was already built. And the medical office, we spoke to the landlord, who is our landlord, and he's never had a problem with it before.
Does he know the dependency of this application or were you referring to the existing structure?
He is aware of the application, yes.
I have a question, maybe it's for Paul or I don't know. The, that manhole cover that Con Ed needs to use, if they were to move to one spot, they'd have to go that way. Would that become a parking spot again or would it not be because Con Ed needs use of that?
It would become.
I don't know the answer. I'm just asking the question. Do you know the answer?
Yes, it used to be a parking spot before, yes.
Okay. So they made you move in to one and a half spaces because they needed access to that?
That's why you never got your full two. And in fairness, there is a certain arbitrary aspect to the trustees saying, go down by half because it was somewhat random what people put up at the time. And I think they. Over there.
Yeah.
You know, I think they had to make a judgment and that was the way they approached it. I would admit that that doesn't feel very scientific, but I think, you know, that's the way we're trying to work it for now is within that guidance. But I can understand that could be frustrating from your perspective.
I understand what your perspective is. I just, I don't know that it was fair for everyone. So in retrospect, if you had known that these would be the rules to cut it down by half, we would have tried to make it bigger back then, so.
I understand. I understand. We definitely see that perspective and we're all just trying to use our best judgment. Here are other questions?
For Christina or Paul, did the chief express any concerns with the traffic patterns?
You know, almost right on the corner there.
He's not for any of that.
Say that again, Christine. He's not in favor of anything.
On street, no.
I have a, I have a clarification question. So there's one diagram of taking one spot and having 12 seats. Is that an applicant, was that a submitted application or you've totally removed that and you want the one and a half?
So your application currently in front of you is for that. So we submitted the one for one parking space and one for the one that we currently have because we had submitted one for the one and a half and it got rejected because it didn't fit the standards necessary. So we did submit an application for the one parking space, but we are here in the meeting today with the request to keep the length that we have. So the one parking space application was just so we can get this meeting to begin with. Because from my understanding, we would, we would not have gotten approved if we submitted an application for more than one parking space.
Okay, so I'm very confused. We have an application for one space, but you're defending a proposal for one and a half that's not before us.
It's sort of a nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
So when I spoke to Christina, she said that we had to submit an application for one parking space to fit all the necessary steps. So if I had submitted an application for one and a half parking space, it would have been rejected.
But I think we understand the situation. If there aren't more questions from the board, I propose to open up the whole meeting. But Eileen, did you have? Yeah, go ahead, please.
As an owner, the way I see it is how many tables I'm going to have at the end of the day. Right now, I have four tables and I have about 20 seats altogether. And if I go down to one space, I can only fit two tabs, which is going to be like eight chairs. When I go and see Under Hills with the parking spots that you're giving him because they're parallel, he's going to fit about 10 to 15 tables. So I understand the rules. I want to follow the rules, but I don't understand how this is fair, how from 20 chairs, I'm going to go to four, eight chairs and how he can have all these chairs and running his business and making the money.
I can tell you the thought process that went into this. The rules call for two diagonal spaces and the structure that would have been put in place as a parallelogram really wouldn't have worked just in terms of the construction. So instead of ending up with two spaces, there's two and a half. So there's a 25% increase above the guideline. But I still think the reduction was pretty sizable. I think we got them down by half.
It's roughly half. And the number of tables is not optimized in the space. I understand what you're saying about what tables could be in the space, but that's not what's been approved for the space. It is smaller. But yes, there's no question that Under Hills benefits from the fact that their spaces have depth and therefore they have not just width, but length that allows them to have more space given the unique aspects of the diagonal parking that aren't available to you because you can't go as far out in the street. So we do recognize every location is, has its own unique opportunities and challenges. So with that, let's open up the public meeting here and see if there are people who would like to comment on this application. Seeing none, I think we'll close the public meeting and put it up for discussion. Whoever has a perspective, please.
I think we've already approved two proposals relating to parallel parking spaces and both of those reduced by at least half and ended up in one space. And I think Il Bacchio's is a good example of how they fit that in and cooperated with us to get there and did a pretty, an aesthetic proposal. And, you know, the Under Hills precedent is an unfortunate one, but I think it results from, as you were talking about, the diagonal spaces and the problem that that presents. And I think following the trustees' guidelines in terms of reduction and in terms of how big a parallel parking space ought to be for a restaurant, I think the proposal they've presented not to the board for one space, I think makes sense. I'm troubled by the fact that it's in front of another building. That's clearly against the guidelines. And I just wonder whether that makes much sense. Because every, every time we approve something that's at variance with the guidelines, it's going to come back to us. And you might find restaurants all around town shopping for spaces down the block and across the street.
I think the challenge as you look at it is you have a crosswalk. And they just don't, you know, like we're saying, everything is unique. And here you have manhole cover and you have the crosswalks. So it's like the perfect storm in terms of where they could possibly put this.
I just want to say that even when you go on the other side, it would be the perfect site to have the tent, but then it's the handicapped parking, like I have no luck.
Understood. We're all trying to make the best of a challenging situation. Other comments?
But it was, it's at one and a half and it was always one and a half. So there's no reduction at all.
No, it was two.
It was two.
There's one and a half.
You reduced it.
Because the manhole.
Well, they had to.
Yeah. Aesthetically, when I look at it, it does bother me that it's in front of the other store. I like it better that it's starting in front of the diner because then it doesn't seem like it's an extension of it as opposed to like a separate.
Yeah, though I would point out that Rosie's managed to work with a space that was completely across the street for a significant period of time during COVID. Other comments, questions? Okay.
But you will get 10 seats though if you do it with the one, no, it's eight seats?
Yeah, eight seats is.
It's eight seats.
I mean, they'll determine what tables and what. It's showing tables for two, but you know, we don't know. Go ahead, Albert.
I guess I'm a little confused. Michael is, we were presented with a one space application.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's what we have.
Well, they've given us a verbal request. If you can do more, they would appreciate more. I think that's what we're here.
And are we open to that?
That'll be a function of what motion people make. Yeah, it's up to us. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I move we approve the application before us for one space.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Albert, you good?
I liked one to happen. It's not going to go through, so you know, I'm more flexible.
It's good to have that. Okay, so we've approved one space and we hope that will work for you. Okay, and last but not least, on the agenda, we have our friends from La Casa and welcome back.
Hello again.
If you can introduce yourself one more time, please.
So my name is John Spencer Pinkel. I go by my middle name, which is Spencer. I've included the full original proposal as well as the addendum. In the interest of time, if you're okay, I'll pass forward to the addendum. It's, I don't know, maybe 25 slides in or something, or you can go, you can, you can keep going through this. It's just the first, keep going, 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 keep going.
At least Christine is not getting credit for Paul's work here.
There we go.
Wait, I, I'm not sure I saw this. Could you scroll back?
Yeah, I had some slides on the bollards, the issue of that and the curb stop that were actually as backup slides. I guess they came through as regular slides. We can go through them if you want to.
So this isn't, this is not what we were given?
This is, this is up on the website. This is, this is what we have, at least.
Those were.
No, no, no. I downloaded, I don't have these.
I asked to have the media, the current application, the hard copy sent you and.
These were, these were backup slides, so they didn't.
Because I downloaded from the website and they're up on the website. Okay. So it sounds like some people have and some don't.
These were, these were, this is exactly.
So this is your argument against the bollards and the curb stops?
So what happened is on April 2nd, this is the exact same thing I presented April 2nd. I didn't present these slides because before I got here, we had had the meeting with the chief and with Jim to talk about it and we agreed that we didn't need them, so I.
Didn't need what?
Didn't need bollards and didn't need the curb stop.
I don't.
So if you go to the prior slide, this, so those slides were not presented. Go back, go back a couple. Go back there.
Yeah, why don't you assume for the moment that everything?
Two slides forward.
But Spencer, if, if, let's assume for the moment that everything is open and everything is on the table, including bollards. So please take us through your overall.
Right, well, this is the chart that I presented, which is why I hid the charts. And I did present this on April 2nd. So we had this meeting and the issue with the bollards with the, with the space I have, which is narrow, is it forces the space in. And because architecturally, you have to step into my cabanas, there's a certain legal requirement for the amount of space that's required to step in before you get to the table. And so we aren't able to narrow the structure and still keep within the access requirements of there. So we went through that with Jim and with chief on March 8th, as indicated. The chief at that time said, he didn't care about that. He wanted everything moved in 10 inches. His concern was the flow of traffic.
So what is the width now? Because you're, the only one I could find with a diagram has eight feet, six inches.
Yeah, it's the same width, it would just move 10 inches in so that the traffic flow is improved.
So you were, you were, are you currently 10 inches away from the curb?
No, it would come onto the curb as almost all these structures do.
So you would make up for the 10 inches by sliding in?
Actually, there's four inches that, there's a little bit of buffer that I can absorb four inches and then it would have to come six inches onto the curb. It's still left of where the parking meters are, so it doesn't.
But it'd be a hybrid structure that's a little bit on the curb.
It's a tiny bit on the curb, yeah.
What's a tiny bit?
Six inches.
So it encroaches on the sidewalk and you've got, okay, understood.
Yeah, so that's what I was asked to do. The other thing we reviewed was the, and then the other big point that they both made was no DPW. So I'm responsible for the cement and the weighting of all of the flower boxes and whatever that are, that are protecting the structure on all sides. And I, we agreed to that. I'm going to put those in and take them out. I don't need any DPW support. The other thing, if you go back to that slide one more, more time, there's something that actually none of the proposals included, thankfully, is a curb stop. So the official guidelines call for a curb stop.
Well, I'm not sure that our approvals, Paul, the curb stops can still be required, can't they? I mean.
Well, I talked about it with the chief and he.
Well, could you let Paul answer?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't part of that conversation, so.
Yeah, my, my impression is that there are certain perspectives that the chief has that regardless of what we approve, he's going to want this to be safe. And whether that's with respect to bollards or curb stops or whatever, in the end, on those issues, the Bucks can stop with the chief, I expect.
Yeah, because I know that the guidelines we have do require those curb stops as well as the bollards.
And if you look at the curb stop, and I think some of these things is just, you know, when you actually look at it in detail, we, we have a lot of people that come out of La Casa and even though it's not a proper crosswalk, they'll walk across the street right there. You can imagine at 9:30 at night, after someone's had a margarita or possibly two, stepping off of that curb into a curb stop that's totally out of the blue. You never see a curb stop in the middle of a parking spot like that. So it's a significant traffic, tripping hazard and doesn't require, doesn't provide any, any safety. So we, we talked about it and everyone agreed, as you said, I mean, these are kind of, there's a lot of details that go into the finalization of these structures and plans. So I had provided, I had presented the summary chart of the meeting that was up earlier. These other slides were hidden as backup if I needed them, but because there were no questions at that time, I didn't present those particular slides. So this, if you just start, go back one there, just, again, just to remind ourselves, and just one more, Paul, if you would. So obviously, you know, the issue that we've been grappling now, this is our third, third meeting, there's a very significant investment that I need to make to be able to deal with the fact that we're on a hill and it requires what really no one else has to deal with, which is putting all this superstructure in. It's got to totally be rebuilt with the new dimensions and the new plans. And in addition to that, every November will have to be totally removed, stored for five months and then reinstalled in April. So there's a lot of extra expense that is associated with the reality of what I'm doing with, yes, over the hills. So that's the financial side that we talked about before. So the next slide, just as, as a summary, you know, my, my original proposal for three parking spaces, I continue to believe is consistent with guidelines, is consistent with what's already been approved for Under Hills. I have no issues with parking. I have no issues with congestion. I have no issue with blocking other merchants. So I'm on the quiet corner on the side of town, not causing problems for, for others. We've had this discussion before. You've asked me to come back with a compromise proposal. I'm prepared to accept a compromise of two and a half parking spaces to address the concerns that have been raised regarding the size perception. Um, so just to compare, uh, and now updated as we've done before, um, you know, I compare Under Hill and La Casa for a few reasons. Obviously, with the two larger spaces. Um, we're also, if you go back to the original survey that was done by the trustees, we're the two, uh, restaurants that Bronxville residents, um, are most enthusiastic about, uh, in terms of the outdoor dining and appreciating having the outdoor dining. Um, and we're also two restaurants that both require significant investment to provide what we're trying to provide to, uh, to the residents and to the guests of our restaurants. So Under Hills was approved, moving down from four to three, a reduction of one parking space, five hundred and sixty square feet. They have presented a plan that shows seven tables and twenty-six seats. We'll look a little bit more at that. Um, they do use prime parking spots. They do block other merchants. Uh, my original proposal also reduces one parking space, uh, is twelve percent smaller than Under Hills, uh, twenty-four seats. I don't block, I don't, uh, use prime parking spots. Um, the, uh, compromise proposal would further reduce that to two and a half spaces, four hundred and sixteen square feet, twenty-six percent smaller than, uh, Under Hills and a corresponding reduction in, um, tables and seats. We go to the next chart. Um, this again provides detail on, on Under Hills', um, proposal. You know, one may ask, uh, how is it that they reduced their space by twenty, you know, they reduced their seats by fifty percent, uh, but they only reduced their space by twenty-five percent and they did that by leaving a third of their space empty. Um, so as you see there, they've got four tables on the left. They've chosen to only put three tables on the right and there's twelve feet of empty space in the middle. This is a space based on occupancy standards of fifteen square feet per chair, accommodates thirty-eight seats. That's what the occupancy of this space is. Uh, and he's basically underfilled it by a third in order to meet, um, the guidelines that, um, that were provided. Now, you guys could have looked at this and said, Steve, we love your proposal. We love Under Hills. This pergola looks fantastic. It's going to be awesome. We'd like it to be a little bit smaller. You know, you're asking for five hundred and sixty square feet in the middle of town, prime real estate. Well, there's already parking issues and congestion. And by the way, you're not even using the twelve feet in the middle of your space. Why are you asking for four, five hundred and sixty square feet if you're only going to use, uh, two-thirds of it? You didn't ask him to reduce the size. You approved the proposal as it was submitted. Um, and quite honestly, I'm glad you did because this is going to be awesome. It's going to be a win for Bronxville. We're all going to get to go there and it's going to be terrific. And if you had asked him to reduce it by thirty percent, he wouldn't have done it because it wouldn't have given him enough space to make it worthwhile for him. So.
Spencer, when, when you go to the previous slide. Uh, and you have, um, twenty-two seats. I mean, is it, you're, you're making the assumption that not all, all the tables are really for people.
They could be, they could be, or yeah, and I went through that at the first meeting. We can go through that. I have my drawings.
Right, no, I know you said in some cases only two people show up, so you, they go. But theoretically, you could have them all filled up and so there's seven times four is twenty-eight.
Right.
Correct?
No, that's right. And theoretically, he could have his all filled up, which would be thirty-eight.
Well, I, we'd have to discuss with Paul whether or not he actually has the approval to do that, but I think that's a separate matter. We're talking about your application tonight.
I understand that, but again, in the interest of consistency, he's got the space for thirty-eight seats, which has been approved. I don't know why anyone would want to approve space that's just going to be empty. Um, so it's just, that's, that's the apples to apples comparison. Again, in fairness to Steve, he did exactly what he was asked to do. He was asked to reduce by, by one parking space and show a diagram that has half the seats. So that's what he did. And, and that's what it is. It's, it's a space that's designed for thirty-eight seats that shows twenty-six seats. And obviously you can see all the empty space within it. Um, the next slide, because we've had various discussions about parking and how it impacts the, um, the diagonals. Just to be very transparent, because I think it's easier to see than it is to talk about, um, his space covers those forty feet. That's exactly the way it lays out on those parking spaces. So it's half of the first space, two full spaces and half of the last space. So two plus a half plus a half is the math that gets me to three parking spaces. So it's, it's not two spaces. It's not two and a half parking spaces. It's three full diagonal parking spaces, forty feet wide, uh, fourteen feet deep. Um, so then I've just got the same slides for La Casa. Um, this is the original proposal that shows the eight tables with the thirty-two seats. Um, the compromise proposal would eliminate one of those tables, um, and that, that's the way that would work. This shows the way the parking is impacted. Again, I've had this restaurant now for three years. I go there almost every day. I've never had a problem finding a parking space where I am. Um, but, um, this is the way it is. The, the police chief has indicated, and I'm not sure who approves this or whether this is approved or whatever, but he wants to extend the commercial loading zone on the left side. Um, so my original proposal, which was discussed with him, was to, you know, have the three spaces run as it's indicated. Um, if we revise it, and I think we looked at it together when we were at the onsite and made it two and a half spaces, um, that would free up a parking space, um, for, on, on the right side there for, for whatever that's worth. Again, I don't have any issues with parking currently, but that's the way that would work from a parking standpoint. Um, so that's it. You know, we've talked about this a lot. I continue to believe that three parking spaces is consistent, um, for the reasons we've talked about. If that's unacceptable, um, I'm prepared to move forward with a compromise at two and a half spaces, assuming that is acceptable. And, uh, I think that basically recovers all the points from my standpoint.
Any more questions from the board before we open up the public meeting?
No.
If not, why don't we go ahead, open up the public meeting, see if there's anyone who'd like to, uh, comment? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Alato.
I'm president of the Bronxville Beautification Council. Um, and I got to say, I do appreciate how pretty, um, the design is of La Casa outside. I pass by it multiple times a day. Uh, the hibiscus are beautiful and it's also very well maintained. So that's kind of all I had to say. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Good evening. Um, my name is Emily Stone and I'm here to just say a few words about La Casa. I moved here two years ago and quickly was roped into volunteering. I serve on the board at RCNS where my younger daughter's at school. And I'll be the elementary school council for the PTA president next year. Um, my first September here, with my auction forms in hand, I walked down Pondfield and spoke to business about business, about supporting both schools in different capacities that year. Um, for one of many reasons why we live in Bronxville, I was so touched by the support that we had along the way and I was rounding the corner to La Casa and both times Spencer made donations and supported the school, the school, both schools, again, in the most extraordinary ways and they were our largest auction packages. And to me, I didn't know this man. I, it was quickly one of my favorite restaurants. Um, I do love a good margarita. But I was so, um, humbled. I do believe that community is intentional and you have to build it. And in my, uh, opinion, this is the best of the best for someone who gives back to our community in all the ways. And I don't see a way in which as a town, we wouldn't want to support that generosity of spirit and community-mindedness amongst ourselves. So I very much hope you'll consider this proposal and look upon it favorably this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Chris Irving. I'm the patron of La Casa. Uh, before I start, though, I want to say I should not come to a meeting like this hungry. We've had coffee, donuts and Mexican food. We should have started the other way. Should have been Mexican food, then the pie, then coffee.
Good point.
Um, I'm here to support the application for La Casa, uh, for many reasons. I, I, I'm the patron. Uh, I know the area well, know the location well. In fact, I had a blind date in that location forty years ago. My wife is here. It was not her. Um, so I know the area.
Was it Tumble Downs then?
It was Tumble, yes, it was. Exactly. It was Tumble Downs. Um, and certainly from all the locations that have been there, I think La Casa really stands out as one that has been extremely popular and has gotten really accolades, not just from people locally, but people all over the area, from Westchester County. I have friends from Brooklyn and New York that come up and eat at the restaurant as well. Uh, it seems to me that the board and La Casa are in alignment really at most issues. I think you certainly support local business. You support a local, certainly a local business owner as a resident. Um, and I think you support an attractive, attractive area and attractive business, which certainly La Casa is very attractive. Um, I think the issue really is the space, of course. And I think it'd be a shame, certainly during the summer months, when so many people come to want to eat outside, to really limit that so much that it does not become the attractive place that it is for people to eat there. I think just as past Monday, as I walked by, every booth was filled. And as obviously the weather gets nicer, that's going to be even more popular. More people are want, will want to be there. So certainly I would endorse that, that you try to come up with a compromises, compromise to allow that space to be maintained. The last thing I would say is certainly the parking issue. I have, uh, two children that are, uh, one's a teen, one twenty, driving, a little scary. But I've always told them the one place to park, the one place the easiest to park is right by La Casa. Either at the garage across the street or certainly by Christ Church. Plenty of parking. That's never been an issue. And I tell my children to park there when they need, need to find something safe. So again, I support La Casa's application. I hope you will as well, too. So thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Is there anyone else who would like to, please, come on up?
Hi, good evening. My name is Daria Kelty. I'm a community member as well as a Realtor here in town with Willam Lawrence. And I wanted to speak on Spencer's behalf, La Casa's behalf. Um, I think that, you know, when the pandemic hit and everyone had to turn to these outdoor spaces, um, you know, rightfully so. I think Spencer, right off the bat, created a very attractive, as other people have mentioned, um, outdoor space and also very unique. You know, you come into there and it's a different feeling. It's these like individual little, you know, cubbies almost, if you will, cubicles, whatever. But everything is beautifully, um, designed from the exterior and interior. And I think that it's harder for him with, given that, given the way they're created, you know. He does almost need a little bit more space in order to maintain that. It's not like separate little tables that you can push closer together or move around. Um, I think that, you know, again, from my Realtor standpoint, I think that establishments like this, uh, certainly attract people from all over. It's, um, a highlight to Bronxville as a community and, um, you know, really showcases our village nicely and improves, you know, the value of our surroundings, you know, for all the people living here. So I would hope that you would approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please.
Name is James Baccor. I live in the Gramerton Townhouses. I pass by this gentleman's restaurant every day. It is immaculate. It's amazing piece of structure. He really did a fine job and takes a little bit of pride for this town. This town deserves more people like him and there are plenty here who are, you know, are affluent enough to enjoy the peace and quiet that these restaurants do. One of the things I think the trustee should understand in general, that after COVID, people want to be out in the fresh air. They want to enjoy it. That includes outdoor dining. It's pleasant. It's fresh. It's relaxing. He offers that. He offers these cabanas where families can kind of huddle together and enjoy another meal as a family. So I support him. You can give him the three parking spaces. It's, I don't, I don't think the problem is the length so much as the width, so it's another half a space. Let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary Ann, please.
After, Mary Ann Pope, um, after attending the last board meeting, uh, and listening to the La Casa application, I thought I should investigate, um, what was, what the policy was, if I could find out and look into it. And, um, I did that and I would like to, I, I'm here to support La Casa, three spaces. And I'd also like to, um, thank the board for acting on developing, uh, a policy that reduces the number of spaces, um, overall for all of the, um, outdoor dining, which you know, I addressed the issue of parking the last time. It's often difficult, uh, to establish any policy. Um, and it's probably more difficult to, um, put it into practice because there are always, as I'm sure you're finding tonight, there are always exceptions, modifications, clarifications. And every, every application or instance is different. And so my question is, uh, when does the policy need to be strictly enforced? And when are exceptions needed? You know, the list, the list could go on. So since this meeting, I made it a point to walk around town to see all of the, um, outdoor dining. And, um, I'm not sure that I have the policy correct. I thought that the, this policy is somewhat evolving. That, um, that it has been evolving and that the perk, that the point of the, uh, policy was to reduce by one space what outdoor dining merchants had. I'm not sure that.
Yeah, my understanding, Paul and Christine, is it was a percentage reduction that the trustees were suggesting, ultimately within the authority of the planning board to make the exact determination. But I believe it was not number of spaces. It was proposed percentage.
That's why I say I'm not.
It was a percentage guideline.
Okay.
But just a guideline.
Was it twenty-five percent?
I believe it was forty to fifty percent. Paul, Christine, you can correct me. But the trustees passed a resolution asking us to reduce, I thought, by a percentage. Yeah.
And adopting a policy for outdoor dining so that, uh, a restaurant will get one parallel parking space and two, um, diagonal spaces. In my understanding about the fifty percent reduction, it was sort of a transitional rule for the existing restaurants that had already established fairly large structures during COVID.
All right, well, I wasn't sure exactly what the policy was, but I thought it was one space. I stand corrected. But at any rate, the La Casa application reduces their, uh, the application is to reduce from four to three. And, um, I just reviewing what I was able to find out that, uh, Under Hills was reduced from four to three. And Pete's was reduced from three spaces to two. Is that?
Two to one.
Oh, two to one.
Two to one.
Okay, well, I understand Pete's has a special.
Much like the diner, much like Yobachia, yeah.
Has a special issue because of all the double parking and the traffic on Park. I know, I know it well. Um, at any rate, there are several favorable things about La Casa. Uh, it doesn't block the front of any other store and I think that's significant. And I know that Under Hills blocks the entrance to part of Citizens Bank and part of the bookstore. Um, but La Casa doesn't block anyone. Um, it's not in a congested area like Park or Pondfield and there's no parking issue, as everybody has said before, because of the parking lot. In addition, the seating, which someone else just addressed, is somewhat different with the separated stalls or whatever have you. And I think you have to take in, into consideration that constructing those stalls each year and taking them down is a lot more work than removing a canopy. Uh, removing a canopy from any of the other spaces because all of, there, there's no structure as significant as what La Casa has. Um, in addition, um, some of the things where La Casa is limited, it does not have the luxury of the wide dimension or width that the dimensions that, as we've all heard tonight, Under Hills has, which is the forty by fourteen. La Casa's eight feet, eight feet wide. And it doesn't have the ability to reconfigure, uh, the tables. They're, they have to be laid out the way they are, whereas Under Hills can change to a table of eight or two, so whatever. So it's a great deal more flexible. Anyway, getting off the specifics, um, thinking about, um, the words. Each meeting, the board is charged with reviewing applications and the board is, what I would think, equitable. And, um, thinking about equitable, teacher that I am, I felt a clear definition might be helpful. I felt a clear definition might be helpful. There are 10 quick definitions, don't worry, I'm not going through 10. I'd like to share, I'd like to share three. And they're three simple words, okay? I think simple sometimes hits home most. The three words are fair, just, and equitable. And I'd like to read the three. Fair implies a proper balance of conflicting interests. That's what you do every time you make a decision, discuss an application, and try to make something work that maybe is a little different than what the policy is. So the board operates thinking fairly. Next one, just. Just implies an exact following of a standard of what is right and proper. So it's much more rigid. The last one, equitable, which is what I think you all try to be. Equitable implies a less rigorous standard than just and usually suggests equal treatment of all concerned. So with the third definition, equitable in mind, I ask the board to accept La Casa's application, reducing from four to three, which is one space, as the other two that I have cited. And keeping, and keep in mind that all of these applicants are trying to just earn a living. You know, it's tough with, with commercial space. I know it well, I have a lot of experience personally. La Casa, to my mind, does meet the policy. They do have some limitations. But I definitely think that you should approve them for three spaces. And on another matter, with your cement stoppers, what do you call them?
Ballards.
What are they called?
No, the ballards are the poles. You think of the curb stops?
Curb stops. My best friend visiting her grandchildren in Denver this past summer, tripped over one. She broke her wrist, she broke her nose, she pad, when she fell, she was knocked out. And she had to have two teeth capped as a result of tripping over one of those. So I would kind of agree that it's, having had someone who personally has been very seriously injured, that they might take that in consideration, especially if there's no lighting there. Anyway, please-
Thank you.
Please approve.
Anyone else for the public meeting? Well, that will close the public meeting and go into discussion. I think the one thing I wanted to start with, and then let's go around the horn, is just for Mike's benefit, since we missed you, I think, at the last meeting, but just to catch you up. And we have different folks voting here, so different things can happen at each meeting, based on mix and based on what we've learned at each meeting. But just to catch up, there were motions that were seconded at the last meeting, one for five and one for eight, and neither was approved. And Spencer's come back now with a seven, and we'll discuss all of those things. But that just catches you up. And now whoever would like to start the discussion, let's have that.
Thank you for that, I did watch the entire video from that, so I am fully up to speed.
But first, one question, what proposal is before us?
I'm assuming, Spencer, it's the seven and two and a half, but you tell us.
I mean, I'd like the original proposal, but if I'm not acceptable, then I'm okay with two and a half.
Okay. Please, have that.
I guess, the first thing I'd like to do is note that the proposal doesn't include ballards and doesn't include a number of things recommended for outdoor dining. And given what the chief has told us about his safety concerns, I think the ballards are necessary. And whether we go with one, two, two and a half, or three, I think the safety issue is one that we ought to focus on because it was raised by the chief. And as he pointed out, we're dealing with, not a parking issue, you're right, that parking is not as much of a problem up there, but it's a truck route and it's an area where there is a lot of traffic and a bit sight restricted. And there's already been one accident involving the structure. So I think that argues for smaller and safer. The restaurant's great, everybody is clearly impressed by it. And, but I think the problems with the safety and the like are an issue. Also, in terms of consistency, I'm a little, I'm reluctant to not require a reduction by half as we've required of everyone else in the parallel parking spaces. So I think I would rather see two instead of two and a half, or four, or three.
Okay, who's next?
I'll agree that restaurant's great, we want you to succeed, so, and it is a great restaurant in the community. Members have been out here and supporting you, so totally appreciate that and listening to it. But a lot of the other restaurants who have come in and you've seen that they went down from two to one. And a lot of people are making sacrifices. And I do feel that the trust, not a feel, the trustees have asked us to, you know, try to bring down the space. And I really would like to see you bring down the space. And I think, you know, two and a half would probably be much more, you know, acceptable because you'll still have seven tables. And while you're saying 22, at the peak, if you had four at everyone, or maybe you throw in a fifth, you can have 28 to, you know, 30 plus seats. And it could still be a win-win for everybody. And everyone's, you know, working together and we're finding a balance for the community and for the, what the trustees representing us want, and, you know, the business owners. And still gives you a great outdoor space, and it's a beautiful space. No one's, you know, people are coming in and saying how much they enjoy walking by, and you maintain it very well. But I do think the other business owners have really made, you know, sacrifices. I'm sure Pete's would like to have two. And Il Baccio and the diner you just saw, they went from, you know, two to one and a half to one. You know, so everyone's having to make, you know, some sacrifices. And when we went over that day, we did see that, you know, you have the loading zone. And then in front of you, there's a spot where the garbage is coming in. So when you're encroaching on that, it's very tight. And as you said, it is wide and it's a narrow street, and there's lots of trucks going back and forth. And, you know, safety is a concern that the, you know, chief had brought up. And I know he's not for any, you know, on-street dining. But, you know, he realizes what the community wants, and, you know, we're taking that all into consideration. But I, I do think I would be inclined more for two and a half as opposed to three.
Mike, is there something you'd like to add?
I think for me, on-street dining was created to support our local restaurants in a very special time. Now that that has passed, I think the village trustees are trying to create an on-ramp, off-ramp, to a normalized environment. And removing all on-street dining would be extreme. And they recognize that there are elements of the village that, that would like that experience. And so I think the compromise that they've tried to provide is to split it in half. It would be a massive impact, I think, to the financials, profitability of these restaurants if all of that disappeared right away. And half seems to be the off-ramp that they've tried to create. When I think about equity, I also think about the other retailers in the village that have rents, are on the first floor, and are not able to take a parking spot for their space. And so I think all of those go into how we think about shrinking the space in half for now. And I think what we've seen is, a lot of the other merchants have been able to do that successfully. And so when we review things here, I think we do try to understand if there are scenarios that require an exception. And I think a lot, all the others have not required an exception from the 50%. And so I ask myself, is there anything unique, very unique on this application that would necessitate that? And I don't know about that. The last thing I would also highlight, what Jim brought up, is this application is unique in that it does not have the ballards and curb stops that has been requested of all, all of the designs. And so, and again, I don't, I think, is there really enough of an exception to cause that to be removed? I don't know. And so when I think about all those factors holistically, it seems like a big exception is being asked of from the policies we've set forth. And so I think I would be supportive of an application for two spaces, which is reduced in half, and has the prescribed ballards and curb stops as per set out by the policy.
Let's bring it over here.
Well, I'm, we've already talked about, there's no parking issues. It, we've seen on the chart that Spencer has already, with the three, a lower square foot. What I brought up last meeting, I'll bring up briefly again, is it sort of a, he's a long, narrow, they're a big, wide, so it looks like he has more room. And in fact, if you look at the chart he made for square foot, it's lower and to go to two and a half spaces is even lower than that. I calculated a 38% reduction with two and a half spaces. I do have to agree with the ballards and the rest, and maybe you under address that. I mean, the chief has said that. Will the chief sort of say that that's required regardless of what we say? If we approve that, he's gonna, he's gonna have the final say on that.
Yeah, my assumption is, anything that we approve would be subject to the chief's view on safety. We're not the final word on that.
Right, so I would, so I would say, sorry, just to finish.
Yeah.
So I would say that 38% reduction with two and a half spaces is consistent with Under Hills and equitable for one of the two premier restaurants in town. And I would like to make a motion for that if I'm allowed to after everyone speaks.
Tom?
I, I think most of the points have already been discussed. I agree, as, as I did last time, with what Albert had just said and would think that the two and a half is a good compromise and would be supportive of that.
Yes, I'll wrap us up on that. And then Jim, I think you had some points you wanted to make in addition. But, you know, hearing everything, I think it's likely that there's a majority of this board that's in favor of two and a half spaces and seven tables. I think we're all really concerned about the safety aspects. And I think any motion should make it clear that our approval is subject to the, you know, ultimate authority of the chief. And if the chief says they're ballards, they're gonna be ballards. And if the chief doesn't, then they aren't. I don't think that's us, I think, but any motion, I think, needs to make it clear that any approval would be subject to that. Any other discussion before we put up a motion?
Can I ask a question? Is it structurally not possible to have the ballards in the design?
Yeah, so I guess, if I can make two points, one on safety and one on the ballards. So the first point on safety, again, we're not talking about a hypothetical situation. I've had this structure in place for three years. The four spaces, at the current impeding the thing, there's been one incident where a car brushed the side of it. It impacted one of, you see the sort of fencing along the side? It impacted that fencing. I had to replace that one piece of fencing and repaint. So it was, in a way, it was a stress test of the structure. No damage, no harm to anyone, no nothing. So in three years, that's, that's the total safety incident that's happened. We're talking about making it smaller, so even in the, even in the three-space proposal, moves up 10 feet from the corner. We're talking about moving it 10 inches in. So could something happen? Yes, something could happen anywhere. The issue with the ballards, and again, my frustration is, I did present this at the first meeting. If we had expressed a concern about ballards when I presented that chart, then we would have had two more meetings to talk about ballards. And I have a lot of opinions on ballards, and I'm actually not, you know, anyway, your point's right. It's the chief's thing, so I'm fine to, to work with the chief on that. The issue is, the structure needs to be weighted, it needs to be anchored to not be affected by hurricane-force winds, basically. So there are standards in terms of the amount of weight you have to anchor a structure like that so it's safe. Much bigger safety concern, actually, than the truck driving by, is the whole structure flying away. So I need, it's about 20,000 pounds of anchoring of that structure. And if you put the ballards in the way they are, they were recommended in the thing, which actually no one else is doing, they're not actually implementing what was in the guidelines. But if you put them there and then put your structure-
I mean, in what way are they not in compliance?
They're supposed to be the ballards. I'm glad they're not being done this way, because I think it'd be very different. You never see fixed ballards in streets, never, anywhere. People use fixed ballards on sidewalks. Because if a car hits a fixed ballard, there's gonna be glass flying everywhere.
But you, I'm sorry, I asked a specific question. You said that the other applicants aren't putting the ballards in according to the guidelines. What deviation have you identified?
So if you look at the guidelines, and again, the guidelines, they're using visuals or whatever, it's not a, it's not written in code-type language, it's not a thousand-page document. It's a PowerPoint document. But if you look at what they're recommending and how they're recommending, they want the ballards out in the middle of the street, and then a six-inch gap, and then your structure begins. If, if they did that, that would be a major safety issue. Because cars are gonna hit those ballards. No one ever puts ballards in the middle of the streets like that. So what they're doing, if you look at Under Hills, they're putting the ballards in between their branches.
Right, and that's, and the chief has recommended that.
Which is a smart thing to do, but that's not what's in the guidelines. So that's an example. So again, when we talked about it onsite, he was fine with what I was saying, I'm happy to talk to him again. He, he has no issue, neither Jim nor the captain had an issue at that time, who knows what I'll say now, with using cement protection and weighted protection like we use now. They just don't want DPW to have to deal with it.
I, yeah, I think the chief has been unequivocal in saying that, to us, that he wants ballards in place.
Again, I could say that I had a margin, the review was open there, it was a whole thing, so anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think my unequivocal view is that we're not the experts on ballards and that I would like to leave it up to the public safety folks, that's my two cents.
Well, okay.
So, you know, I would be in favor of a motion that included that. But with that, is there someone who would like to make a motion? Albert?
So just, so it's just us five of the voting members tonight, right?
Yes, tonight, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm making a motion to approve La Casa's revised plans of two and a half spaces, subject to the final authority of the chief on the safety issues and the ballards.
A clarification, is that for seven tables? Because I think you also had a version that had eight, so just-
Two and a half spaces is seven tables, Spencer? So let me try again. So I make a motion to approve La Casa's seven tables, which equals two and a half parking spaces, subject to the final authority of the chief.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion before we vote?
I, just, I'm gonna have a hard time explaining to the other applicants why we didn't maintain consistency in terms of shrinkage. And I think we're inviting problems. And, and not following the trustees' guidelines.
I, I have not heard why this specific property cannot comply with the 50% reduction that every other building has.
It's not, it's not, Under Hills is not.
On the number of seats. I look at it as seats.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a shot at, at some of this. I think this is a unique set of circumstances. You have a sloped environment that's very difficult to construct and deconstruct. You have a location that, unlike almost all the others, doesn't block any contiguous properties. And so I think that combination calls for a little flexibility on this. So with that, let's call the question, all in favor? Opposed?
No.
Okay, best of luck, thank you. Okay, our next meeting will be July what, Christine? Okay. Thank you very much for coming.